I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town Council Budget Workshop on July 20th, 2023. I will begin with roll call. Councillor Maguire.
President.
Councillor Meany.
President.
Councillor Height.
Here.
Councillor Gass is excused and I am Councillor Chappell. And to my right is Town Manager Nate Rudy. Tonight we'll be discussing amendments to the proposed FY24 municipal budget. The budget went out to vote in mid-June at referendum but failed. So we will be making some amendments, suggested amendments, to present to the public at a future Town Hall-style meeting later this summer. Well, tend to disagree. Yeah. So, we had some conversation on Tuesday evening and at our workshop last Thursday where we kind of set the stage for what's to come. Last Thursday Nate provided us with a spreadsheet that outlined some suggested cuts and also some changes that have happened in revenue. So, I'm not really sure how it looks like to begin. Would you? Maybe we should go around the room and just kind of get an idea of what everyone's kind of top cuts are that they're considering. No one likes to make cuts, but given our situation, it's certainly necessary. So, I guess I'll begin. Biggest thing I can see amending is the reserve in the Capital Improvement Plan, which is currently set at $325,000, which helps us save for next year's costs on capital projects. I think there was consensus in room at prior meetings that we are comfortable cutting from that. However, perhaps not the whole $325,000, so we can have a conversation about that. There's been some adjustments made to the School Resource Officer vehicles and fees surrounding their purchasing of their vehicle that we are no longer going to do. So those I think are easy cuts. The other cut I think is not so much easy, but one we could make for the year was the change in staffing in Public Works where we were amending the Public Works Director position to a Public Services Administrator position. If we maintain that as a Public Works Director position, there's a cost savings of about $105,000. Those were really the two big ones for me. Some other ones I might like to talk about are potentially adjusting the COLA increase that we have for staff this year. I would like to maintain the wage adjustment increases that we promised, but currently COLA is at 6%, 4% being across the board and 2% being performance-based. So I'd like to have a conversation about potentially amending that. I would also be up for a discussion around making some adjustments to professional development costs. See potentially conversation about the Senior Property Tax Program because there have been some changes at the state level that might warrant changes to our municipal program. And then also I had mentioned to Nate, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to follow up, but I would like some clarity around the increases we're seeing across the board for electricity. I know I had raised that during the budgeting process and never felt like I got a real clear answer as to why our electricity costs have increased so dramatically when we're locked into a fixed rate due to our solar farm on the municipal landfill. So just curious about that. Maybe we can make some adjustments there. Those are kind of the big ones for me. Dan, would you like to go? I don't know what you're looking at.
Death by a thousand cuts.
Right.
I have some general questions. One of them is that, if I remember correctly, the state law regarding solar farm prevented us from taxing that other than the value of the lien. And then it was my understanding that the state would reimburse us for half of the tax that we could not collect. But is that still accurate?
Yeah.
Have we done that yet? And is that potential revenue in that forecast? I'll have to get that. Because if not, there'd be a little bit more revenue there. Like, Prisda asked for, it was February, it was a long time ago. I did break out some of the accounts. Legal, human fuel, auto fuel, water, and electricity. Because I had similar questions and along those questions are there were significant changes made for the budget as to how that money was dispersed across the accounts. And I feel like it would be good to lot at that, if you will, and just make sure that those disbursements add up to that total that we're expecting for for the year. Those are all in the right places because as you look through the budget, as you look through the reports, you know, we have so many versions to be honest.
That should be more clear.
In the meantime, there are, now I'm looking at the there are budgeted numbers for some areas for 2024 where there was no prior budget. I had some questions about that. I won't get into it right now. I have three pages of questions actually and account numbers. That basically total up $372,145 worth of increases above the FY2023 budget. So, I won't go into that line by line. And those are increases that, you know, I'm not saying that these are things that can be cut or that the entire amount is available to be cut. For instance, the COLA for some reason got budgeted in the General Insurance tab, which I don't quite understand. But anyways, it's there. For 6%, the total of $223,684, which comes out to $37,201 per 1% increase. So I was thinking if you, you know, if you reduce the COLA from 6 to 4, for instance, that would be a reduction of $7,000. I don't, I, when I went through my book and I went through every single account, I did not look at I will cut everything and everything else before.
Yeah.
This kind of that may mean that there are some cuts that people aren't going to like as a result. But that's the next, but I think it's definitely the only way to better some of this. So that was pretty nebulous, but that's kind of, I think it's, this is kind of the circle and the drain exercise.
Yeah.
That's kind of where I'm at right now.
The increases that you totaled up to be about $372,000. What, what types of line items were you looking at?
They are, there are a variety of things.
I know you mentioned COLA, but I was
There are legal lines, there are contingency lines where we created some new contingencies that didn't exist before. We increased some of the contingencies. But I think maybe we don't increase them if we can. There is some supplies and
Yeah, I think a lot of those increased costs were a result of staff trying to project inflationary pressures on the things they're buying. So I'm not
These are also things, for instance, that didn't have, like either they're big increases.
Okay.
They're not just small ones. For instance, you know, there's, there's a $38,000 increase in salt, but we know what salt's going to cost us now. So I don't know if
That's a good point, yeah.
You know, I think that for some of these things, I was actually thinking, I don't know when normally, but if I remember right, it's usually the fall that we left it for the winter acres or for the private ways, the public ways. That if we actually went to bid on that sooner, we could know that. So that whatever is in the budget for a projected increase. I did write down all the account numbers for the questions. It was sort of frantic scratching. I'm happy to make a copy of it separately.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to get a sense at what, what types of things you were you were noticing increases in. So that's fine. Marty, did you have thoughts?
Yeah, excuse me. On that sheet that we were handed a while back, it said something there about the the School Resource Officer. Now, shouldn't that be carried by the Board of Education?
So we, the School Resource Officer in the summertime, just one of the officers, it's an extra officer we have on hand for policing the town. And I believe that we incur a cost to support that as a result. Is that correct?
We pay, we pay the summer portion of the long salary for that.
Okay, that's, that's cool. The next thing I was thinking of is the land acquisition for $50,000, but then the other night we mentioned that we needed for right of ways out here.
Or, yeah.
And I guess on Main Street too.
Right, so the $50,000 in the CIP that we've set aside for land acquisition would be supplementary to anything that was approved through our borrowing 1/12 from the general fund. The question that would have added, I believe, $417? What was the, was it $417,000? It was a separate market article. That item did fail. We certainly could present it again, but the $50,000 with supplement through CIP would supplement that borrowing of $417,000 from the general fund. So, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know if we could potentially cut the $50,000 in CIP and then just make a case for a land acquisition fund through the general.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Okay.
I I mean, it's I'd like to think that it was crystal clear for people when they're going like that. But I'm not certain in the conversations I've had with people, so have the opportunity to clear that up. Because I think there's a lot of support for fixing.
Yeah, I mean, I think the intent, so the Land Acquisition Fund, the intent was kind of twofold. It would support the work, the infrastructure work we need to be doing on Main Street and Yarmouth Road. There's like, if the roads shift, there's likely going to be some acquisition of land needed. And so we wanted flexibility to react to that. It also would support the right-of-way costs for any rights of way that need to increase. But, but then it also would, would give us flexibility in responding to priorities outlined in the Open Space Plan and the Compliments of Plan for increased conservation and recreational facilities.
One question I had about that was that currently, I mean, we have to go to the voters to get permission to spend the money. What I was struggling to remember was, I was looking at this was, I think that's still the case with that one. I don't think that.
Are you talking about the 1/12s, just borrowing 1/12s from the general fund? Or are you talking about the Land Acquisition Fund in general?
Because I understand we have to give the voters to get their permission to spend that money.
I think the intent with establishing this fund was that it would allow us flexibility without going to the voters because they would have approved it at this point and with the designated purpose stated, and then we wouldn't have to go back again to use it. That was the intent.
I'll have to do some research because I think that some of, I think the money that we currently have set aside in that account or we can't spend that money.
Yeah, so I don't know, what do we have in the land? I don't know what we have in the Land Acquisition Fund currently. I don't know.
Because we've done that before. We have to do that.
But that was a bond that we asked for, so, yeah.
My understanding is that the intent was to put that money to that fund at the discretion of the councils specifically because the real estate transactions will not coincide with the June elections. So it was intentionally, the intent was to put it into that fund to be used whenever the real estate transaction needed to occur.
Right.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, but but we are, there is an ordinance. I just want to understand that.
Yeah, it's a good question. We need to answer that if we need, do we need permission from voters to use funds out from a land acquisition? Okay. Marty, did you have anything else? You have the School Resource Officer and Land Acquisition Fund, CIP.
We had a section there, for lack of a better word, I'm going to call it gifts, like the American Legion and beaches.
Community services.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That adds up to 50,000 or 60,000, I think. If we had to, we could cut the whole thing.
I don't, I don't agree with cutting the whole thing. A lot of those organizations provide direct services to residents, but
Except for the food bank.
Well, yeah. Great. But I think we could have a conversation about which ones are still providing services regularly and we might need to do some follow-up with individual organizations. But you're right, the proposed this line that says approved, I'm assuming that means pending for 2020. The proposed community service line is $62,000. But the most significant portion of that is $19,000 for the senior tax relief program we have at our municipal level. And then the other large portion is lake water quality supporting the lakes associations, particularly their mill foil mitigation and Little Sevage Lake. So, the rest of it would just be very small numbers.
I had made a pitch at the beginning of the conversation this year that we not fund any work in the championship.
I know. I don't think we, yeah, we, you know, I don't, I think just in the hecticness, that's not a word, but
That's okay.
Of the budget season, we didn't, we didn't get those letters out. So, but it's certainly something we should be doing next year and
The only other thought I had was the last, the lesson I want to touch is the was pay.
Yeah, I think a lot of us have expressed that sentiment that we don't, especially the wage adjustments that we promised over two years, we don't, we are not interested in amending that. Okay. Matthew, did you have any thoughts? I know you're kind of coming into this after the fact, but
Yes, yes, and I'm nowhere near as conversant with this particular as you guys are. And I don't want to, you know, I don't want to come to it from a place of ignorance, which I'm sort of in at the moment. Despite my best efforts to get this out. But I agree that, that cutting the agreed-to-pay increases should be off the table or not. You know, I'm, I'm in favor of not considering going back on those things.
Right.
I, I think I would rather see an alternative to cutting the COLAs, but I, I understand how that is more attractive, that that's a possibility. I'm open to that. But like we wanted. I guess I am, I am inclined to not lose the land acquisition money, but I don't understand entirely your discussion you just had. And we don't have to revisit it, but if you have something to clarify it.
Well, go ahead, yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Um, yeah, it's not, our, our charter allows us to, we're, we're responsible for setting aside each year certain and that's 3/12s.
Yeah, so.
And the charter allows us to borrow 1/12 and use that money for whatever purposes the voters approve. But we have to repay that within five years. The last time we did this was with the lab. So it's kind of, I analogy I use, it's kind of like feels like a smart way to use that.
So that, that $50,000 income from that.
No, so basically we had two line items in the budget for land acquisition. There was this borrowing that we were doing that technically was not part of our operating budget. It was sort of almost like a bond, but it's, you're borrowing from your own savings account. That was $417,000. So it didn't impact the mill rate at all. It just was, we already have, we will already be collecting that money and we're borrowing from ourselves.
Yes.
The $50,000, yeah, is in the Capital Improvement Plan as a separate source of revenue for creating a land acquisition fund. So Marty was proposing taking it out of the capital improvement program budget because we potentially will have this other source of funding in addition to that $50,000. Does that clarify for you somewhat?
I understand what you said.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Councillor, the money in the CIP budget has been budgeted for the last few years, maybe the last two years as part of the regular budgeting to give the council the opportunity to make real estate acquisitions that support the strategic, the comprehensive plan. So if there's a piece of rural property or conservation property that the town can participate in purchasing to make a, you know, part of that contiguous area of untouched or forested land, that's something that's mentioned. Right. So that was kind of the purpose of that, was to build up some money that could be used at the council's discretion for real estate.
For the strategic real estate acquisition.
The $50,000? Yes. The, the $417,000 is a separate item that was put on the budget this year, understanding that in order for the Yarmouth Road and Main Street projects, the main DOT projects to be completed, certain rights of lay will need to be acquired by the town. And so that money has a directed purpose. Because it's real estate transactions, the council doesn't want to, you know, talk about all of the details publicly, but it's entirely for the purpose of supporting that, those DOT projects for the rights of way that the town has to purchase.
So, yeah. That, that's given that, and I, I am, I think that should be kept in the budget.
The $50,000?
$50,000, well, I mean, both.
Okay.
I mean, because the Yarmouth Road project is super important. And I think the idea of the town had, you know, the priority of putting, setting aside money to acquire land for environmental reasons, for recreational reasons, for whatever. I, I think that's a high priority for me to do that sort of.
Go ahead, Dan.
I, I get that these things are a high priority for us.
Yeah, the board said no to a lot of things.
They did.
Not to the things that I think are important, but to everything.
And, and my point is, in the bottom, the end result is that we have to present that.
I, I, no need to tell me that, I understand that.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Well, I, I I, I guess I think that the professional development of town staff should also be a high priority. And I don't know enough to suggest, you know, targeted cuts that would, you know, if there's things that we could delay or if there's a sinking fund that we're for a project that could be delayed, you know, and reduce a payment to that sinking fund. I'm in favor of that sort of, that sort of cut. I don't have anything more specific to say.
Thank you. I appreciate your input, especially given coming to the part like
But I, I, you know, I totally support the goal of getting the budget down in the destruction of operations.
I agree. Okay, so perhaps it would be helpful to look at the, I know we don't, we don't all have the most current version of the capital improvement projects, but perhaps it would be okay, yeah, let me
This is the edited list where I deleted lines for you on your request. So the final figures in each section are the same and the grand total at the bottom is the same. But I deleted all of the lines that were moved out to ARPA, TIF and
Right.
what happened.
Okay. Thank you for cleaning that up.
Page two.
Page two of the pack, no, of the packet that's online.
And the column that you're looking at is the amount council column all the way on the right. The other two were the iterations that got you to the final budget proposal, which is in that column.
So, the things on here, there's not a lot of things to take out. A lot of the, what we're doing in here is super important for safety and road maintenance and functioning of our facilities. But I think Nate, you mentioned potentially, I mean, we, we need this, this equipment, but perhaps we could hold off on purchasing the skid lift under public buildings and maintenance, which is currently at $20,600.
So what Mo Russo has told me is that this is in lieu of rentals for a lift to do things like tree cutting and certain building maintenance and putting up banners for CEDC and the skid lift that the town had been renting is no longer available. So to rent a vehicle, you'd have to rent like a bucket truck. And the rental cost for that would be much higher than what was budgeted last year. So you could elect to defer that cost, but it would be replaced by the rental cost, which I'm, I want to say it was eight thousand dollars, but I don't want to be quoted on that because I can't remember exactly where I got that figure from. Mo would prefer that you did, obviously.
No, I'm sure everybody prefers. I prefer we wouldn't cut so much, but it's just what we're looking at doing because we have to.
Let me see if I can get a.
Yeah, if we could get a better, yeah, if we could get a bigger figure for the rental cost on a yearly basis. And then perhaps we can revisit the skid lift next year. And then the other thing I, that I was noticing in CIP is the skateboard park that I know we're putting ten thousand dollars a year towards building a skateboard park. But perhaps this is one of the things we could hold off saving towards this year. I know the skateboard park is very important to a lot of young people in town. And I'm not saying it's not something we continue saving for in the future, but we do have, I don't remember what the current balance is. We do have a balance towards building the skateboard park. But we also haven't, we also haven't heard really an update on any kind of fund. I know that there was a group of people looking to fundraise and do some planning around that, but we, I would like to maybe have an update from them and then we can perhaps revisit saving for that again in the future.
It's possible to get an update or report on that.
Oh, do you have a, that would be great. Just a reminder to introduce yourself.
My name is Anthony Doms. I'm the Director of Recreation for the Town of Gray. Yeah, we are seeking more community input in terms of skate park planning. I believe we're on the precipice of that with our newest Recreation Committee appointment. That is somebody who's had some experience with skate park planning and has some passion for, for the project itself. That being said, we're not any, in any different place than we were at this point in time. We haven't begun that work, but we do plan to begin it with more community input and with that appointment in particular.
Okay, yeah, that's great to hear. You have someone on the committee that's interested in that. Do you, do you have a sense for when that might be a priority for the committee? Would it be in the next year or more like a year or two from now? Just trying to get, I don't, I don't know how much we have in the fund. I know we at least have a beginning for some, for some work, but.
Yes, I believe the fund is at twenty thousand dollars. And that is really not enough to get much done in terms of what skateboard parks cost.
I know they cost quite a lot more than that. Yeah, that's really just a pebble and see if, but yeah. Okay. Well, that's good to know that we're at the status of that. Again, it's just a conversation piece. We can certainly keep it in if we feel it's necessary. Thanks, Anthony. We could reduce it, yeah. And then I, the only other thing I was kind of highlighting on the CIP was, I would like some input from you and Mo about how urgently we need to replace the CEO in assessing vehicles and the buildings and grounds truck that's listed under Public Works and Town Vehicles. Okay, I know we're removing the thirty four thousand dollar line item for the SRO vehicle.
The buildings and grounds, the goal was to the animal control officer is driving a vehicle that is on its, it was on its last lift last year. This year it's running on a miracle. It needs to be replaced urgently. The plan was to move the Chevy Tahoe SRO vehicle that we acquired last year from Buildings and Grounds to the ACO. And the reason that the truck is in here is to replace that vehicle. So this is a cost for an electric vehicle. The zero turn mower is also an electric vehicle. And the CEO of planning vehicle is also, it's electric hybrid.
I was gonna say, didn't we just set, we settled on hybrids?
Gas electric.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, to further the sustainability goals and things that were mentioned. I also think that the CEO vehicle, the other part of the plan was to move that truck that the CEO and assessors currently use into Buildings and Grounds. They need two vehicles in Buildings and Grounds for their crew to be able to be as efficient as they want to be. You may recall that in last year's budget, or sorry, in last year's operating year, Mo split the Buildings and Grounds team into a Building Maintenance Team and a Projects Team. So in order for the Building Maintenance Team and Projects Team to not have to share a vehicle where they might be at two totally different places in town. And because there's another staff member, one of, he wants to get those two vehicles in the line. So that's where the other planning and assessing vehicle comes in. The code office in particular has identified for me that the truck that they're using is not optimal vehicle for the sites that they're visiting, particularly on camp roads. And so they have asked for a smaller vehicle with clearance, but not a large hood to have to look over and down over when they're trying to navigate terrain that is narrow and has maybe trees and stalks and whatnot. They have to work really hard to avoid right now.
Okay, so this, the CEO vehicle would be that new hybrid SUV hybrid. So the current CEO truck would go to Buildings and Grounds and then they would also purchase this new truck. And then the current, one of the current Buildings and Grounds trucks would go to the animal control officer.
That's correct. And then again, with, you know, we looked at the gas hybrid option. The total cost of ownership in the long haul is lower with the gas hybrid. So there is this price tag here, but over time, it'll cost the town less to go this option. Yeah, I think that I understand the overtime piece. I think the other, the other component to that is we're purchasing these vehicles outright. And is there a possibility that we could lease buy or purchase them? I understand that increases the cost of the life of the vehicle, but.
So it's your feeling that we need, we need to make these purchases in the shuffling of vehicles this year, mostly because the animal control officer's vehicle is not going to last another year?
Correct. The town will be operationally impaired the moment that that vehicle expires. And given the option between going from gas hybrid to a gas engine versus using the lease to earn auction, I would encourage the council because the carrying cost is lower and because the amount the town will save in this year's budget from going gas hybrid to gas is fairly, it's not very sustainable.
It was, I remember it wasn't very much the difference between gas.
I would encourage you to consider going to lease to earn before you consider going from gas hybrid to gas.
Okay.
Maybe both.
Marty, did you have anything you noticed on the CIP that you, besides the land acquisition fund that you wanted to amend?
I did see something on the. It's just the time to bring it up.
Actually, can I make a suggestion? Sorry, Marty.
Sure.
Since we're kind of in CIP, why don't we just start at the top of CIP and just go right down through it?
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
The first one was the road and surfacing. So far behind as it is.
It's on packet, it's on your, do you have the packet for tonight?
I read about it somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah, so packet page two, the first section, as Dan mentioned, was road resurfacing, which I know that's something you're passionate about maintaining over the years.
You know, to Nate's point earlier about the cost of the town.
No, it costs much.
A much bigger cost of the town for not taking care of it.
Yes.
Big.
I agree. I think also just historically Gray has done an extraordinary job maintaining the roads. I think our last report from Goral Palmer on the condition of roads, all our roads are in mostly good condition. Very few were in poor condition, which is certainly not the case for most other towns. You just have to drive out of Gray. And it's certainly, as Dan mentioned, that the cost of maintaining your roads is much cheaper than having to just rebuild them, but from lack of maintenance. So I would be in favor of leaving, leaving this line. Does anyone disagree or?
I mean, I don't know enough and I wouldn't want to, I don't know what amount would be right. There's particular projects that could be deferred for a certain amount, but I would be open to some reductions there.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I would be curious what, I can't recall. I know Tim has told us several times which roads this covers, but. Yeah.
There are five roads that we're leaving.
It might be on the expanded expanded version of the CIP. I forget.
If there's no other support we sent to me, you're officially.
No, I would be curious to know if there are, just from Tim, you know, is there anything that could be a year, you know?
Well, I can tell you from my conversations with him is that with the cost of asphalt and contracted services going up, six hundred and sixty is, if anything, is low for the projected road construction budget for this year. You may recall that we had to cut segments of road out of this year, last year's budget because the costs went up so much.
Right.
We're already.
Right, we're already kind of behind by half a year.
I understand. I just, that's an item that I wouldn't take off the table if there was. And again, if, like, taking a little out, you're gonna cause chaos or across the board problems. The problem with that, but it seems like a distinct smaller project that can be through.
Well, of the five roads that are on the list, two of them are smaller. Six change. Yeah, there's another figure. It was about, not quite, it was one seventy thousand. So again, I mean, I suppose if you were to take one of the two smaller ones out. Two smaller roads on the. I think if we make cuts to that budget, we should do it such that we can.
Right.
Right. Right, or increase costs, you know, like for the other projects.
Yeah, sometimes if you do more, it's actually less money.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know enough.
No, we, I think we need input from Tim around on that for sure. Okay, next up was bridge repair and replacement. And correct me if I'm wrong, we don't really have a choice in doing those projects, right? Yeah, we have the DOT.
My question here was this project to be done in twenty twenty four? Or are we saving towards, we're saving towards doing the project? I'm not sure.
Uh, that I don't know. I thought they were projects that were on the schedule to be done. Totten Road and McConkey Road.
I believe these are supposed to be done maybe next season, but I'd have to get back to.
There for, it says cross repairs, it's in the comments or something. Specifically so for each. I believe these are bridges. The other thing with bridge repair, which we have done in the past, is we have because of the way from the bridge, so. Believe in this case, COVID, so. If you have a five year bond, it could pay off. I don't want to sound like I'm disagree with, it's not our goal, but for larger infrastructure.
It can make sense in, you know, in this current budget. I think generally it's problematic.
Twenty twenty five, two bonds. One of the news bridges in Rosemont, the library expansion. So we'll see a reduction there of around a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So it will increase debt service for twenty twenty four, which is already. But after that, in twenty twenty six, another one that expires. And then in twenty twenty eight, the ham. So and our rating for the bonds, the bond agencies actually improved this past fiscal year. And we have a very strong rating. So we can get pretty good rates on money when we have to burn, we have those letters from the government.
I mean, we, we're going to have a bond question, most likely anyway, to address the panel septic and municipal changes for some of our buildings, facility buildings. But yeah, the total cost for this bridge repair is a hundred twenty one thousand dollars. So we could, we could add to that bond and we'd get more like a million to add to the bridge repair.
Yeah, I don't know if it would make sense to keep them separate and just have more than. Bond or roll them all together.
Might be more costly to have two bonds because then you have more fees involved in like
Possibly.
Closing costs and things, I would imagine.
That's correct. If we lump it all together, you know, then we have to run this curve.
Failing.
Yeah, for different reasons.
Right.
Again, I think that, you know, clearly the work has to be done. There's the proof is even put over there. I think most people, if they were to do this kind of infrastructure.
Go ahead, go ahead, Nate.
Just to note that the Totten Road fifty thousand is just for design. That's an estimate for the design portion, not the construction portion. So we'll be looking at an additional cost for that. And I have to look and see what the time factor is. It may be that we're constrained on time. If we deferred it, we might not be able to hit whatever constraint. I'm looking for some material in the concrete road. Anything up, so I have to get back to that.
It sounds like maybe that's a conversation for the bond. We've already kind of talked about Public Works Town Vehicles and Equipment. That was the, I just raised a minute ago. Technology, we have. Technology, we have, um, let me just read them off. Desktop computer replacement, there's eight of those. Server replacements, which if I recall, are in dire need of replacing. There's three of those. Uh, cradle point router. I don't recall what that was exactly. Laptop computer replacements, there's four of those. IT security audit, if I recall, that was also something that was kind of, important to reduce likelihood that we are hacked at $41,000. Time clock plus module trio software at 30,500. Um, if you recall, from John's um, department memo and our meet from our meeting Tuesday, I believe he highlighted that this was something he would really very much like to retain because this um, program is the only one that works with our trio software for time, for the tracking folks' time in the office. Matthew, did you have, did you have a hand of it? No, no, I thought you, I thought you did. Dan did. Someone had their hand up. Okay, go ahead.
I, I think the, the time clock piece is on the block. From the standpoint that we, you know, we managed to go this long without it, I don't doubt for a second that it would be an efficient and effective improvement in the process, but when something has to go, steps goes, what we do. So I think for me, that's one possibility. The other possibility for me is the audit. Again, it's not that I don't think that the audit is a good idea. I don't know how much more risk we're at this year than we were actually at the year before, or how much more risk would be worth putting on. The other, excuse me, the other possibility would be to cut that in half and put $20,000 instead of this year to open up the other 21,000 and, excuse me, next year. So that we saved a lot of money this year, but if we put it off too long.
Nate, did you have a little information on the IT security audit? I know you discussed it with me on the phone the other day. I just, I'm not recalling the specifics.
I can tell you about that and the cradle point router and time.
Okay.
The IT audit, Josh made some phone calls and did some research on what a scope of work and price would look like, and that is what's reflected in the budget item. The concern is that there's been an increase in cyber attacks on local governments and also our Harvard Pilgrim insurance, health insurance provider was hacked this year and they are about three months behind on processing, uh, payments. So there's, there's definitely concern that's been raised at the meetings that I've attended around cybersecurity and around targeted attacks on municipal governments. The rationale for keeping it in is the, the cost and inconvenience of being hacked and having to answer. The, uh, the question of, you know, we've, we've not had one before, so is it necessary for this year's is one I can't really answer. Qualitatively, I would say no, but I could also understand an argument for backing it off. And, and Josh even mentioned that if something has to be cut, this might be what we're talking about. I, I would argue for it, but I'll just lay that on the table. Uh, cradle point router is something that would be great to have. It is a part of our security um, and our network distribution, but it is something that could be deferred to FY25. And with time clock, um, the, the challenge is that each department has a different way of reporting payroll. And John is, uh, you know, over the court, it, over the course of three days, John is putting in a substantial amount of time in, navigating all of that and getting payroll done. So his recommendation is that this module would make that process much more accurate and faster. But again, I took your point.
Um.
We have a system that works. It's just, it's very frustrating for employees when uh, errors occur and in his work, John is finding several different things in the system that he would like to optimize to speed it up and make it more accurate.
Just curious why different departments.
Uh, they're on different schedules and they have different ways of accruing earned time.
Why?
Uh, because of, uh, union contracts, because they're on different hour schedules, because they work different days of the week and accrue differences differently.
It still seems like there ought to be one, one system proof.
Just, there's a lot of differences in the way that time works in different departments. It, it all does effectively go through one system. It goes through John and Truro the some finger check, but, uh, but each department has a different works.
Good.
Hi, um. I'd be curious to know how much time, we say it takes John three days and put the data, like, I'd be curious to know how much time total he's spending on that. And then is that on a bi-weekly basis he's doing it? You're paid every other week? Yeah, so just a quick cost, like a per month cost of his time might be helpful just to give us perspective on whether $30,500 is worth improving the cost work already incurring from his time being spent doing that. Um. How much time he's spending on it? Yeah. Um, I mean, the cradle point router is $5,000 and I, is that just like a security block on, different than a regular router? I'm just saying, I guess I fully understand. Maybe Josh?
Sure. I'm Josh from behind the curtain. I'm Josh, typically director of educations, information and libraries. Uh, the cradle point router is essentially a mobile hotspot with a really wide broadband capability. So ideally for everyday use, it would be good for things like if Parks and Rec was going on a field trip, it could take the cradle point on the bus, everyone on the bus would have Wi-Fi. Specifically, if in the event, like we had a couple of years ago, internet service or power was disrupted around town, the creative point could be used to maintain services at any remote location. So if pedal was not available, we could get the cradle point here, everyone have Wi-Fi. It could be used both to maintain the visible functions, sorry, as well as possible for community use as well during such a brief season.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Go ahead, Matt.
Can I just say, I mean, Nate mentioned something about security. Does it enhance our cybersecurity?
Well, it, it does in the sense, I mean, not off the bat, but it does in the sense that it maintains, it maintains our ability to use the internet during times of internet outage. So it doesn't really protect the everyday uses of what we do, but at the same time too, if those were to go down, anything we'd use as a substitute would be a lot more unstable and or open to attack. So I think that it is a good protective measure that could be very useful if the event ever occurred.
Okay, thank you. I mean, it doesn't seem like a large cost to me for something that could potentially give some flexibility to how our programs operate and then also be a kind of a, I mean, let's face the internet, everyone needs internet nowadays and it's, it's kind of a lifeline, especially during emergencies. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, um. Okay, let's go on to building maintenance. Sorry, oh, go ahead.
Can we just go back to public works and vehicles?
Yeah.
I, I, and I, I understand, you know, that one of the vehicles is
barely, barely functional.
Is in danger of, of failing and interrupting operations. But, you know, but there's $148,000 in that, in that account. So I mean, the fact that there's one vehicle that needs to be replaced, it, you know, justifies the whole thing. I mean, I understand that it might, it might be, you know, shifting things around like, you know, the way Nate proposed might be the most efficient in meeting everyone's needs, but I just, I just wonder if there's not, you know, one that could be picked out of, of those for, or, you know, if there isn't some way to reduce that almost on.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's a, it's a good question. Um, I think I'd like to get an answer about what the cost of potentially leasing the vehicles, um, might be and what that would mean for reducing the budget this year. And then also Dan was wondering about the difference in cost for a gas powered, gas powered vehicles versus hybrid.
Yeah, I, I. I'm taking moving away.
I, I would too. I would prefer to maintain at least a hybrid vehicle for these, um, but I, I, I think that the potential for leasing this year is a good, is a good. Uh, go ahead, Dan.
Thing, one thing we have to keep in mind, especially for Mo is that we've significantly added its responsibilities with the agreement on the hill, with the, um, agreement of the majority of the councils to turn the old maintenance building over to the rec department of turning the fire station down by the post office into building for buildings around. We're, we've substantially increased our sort of base costs and maintaining all of that folks to now.
Yeah.
I think personally, it is having been part of making the decisions to, and this stuff can also play a real responsibility to try and give it the equipment to do that.
Yeah, that's a good point, Dan. Yeah, we'll, we'll circle back around to that, Matthew, because we kind of have a pending question about the leasing option, but, um, we'll come back to it for sure. Um, okay, building maintenance. We've got the panel media IT room closet for 10,000 and that was expanding the media space in there so that they can move out their servers.
It's actually putting a wall between this area and servers that are.
They're also very hot and, um, yeah, it's, I think, I think that's a small cost for creating a better work environment back there. The panel staff door replacement, um, is that the door on the side needed? Yeah, yeah. Needing, there was something wrong with it.
That door is starting to rust out.
Yeah. Uh, how dire is it?
It's starting.
Starting to rust.
Well, I mean, it's, rust is bubbling on the surface of it, which means that it's rusting inside, so it's, I don't know if it's imminent we're going to fail, but it, it needs, in my estimation, to be replaced. Same thing with, uh, there's some doors in other buildings that are failing. I think probably, uh, Chief Al Kinnick can talk about the central station door.
Okay, um, yeah, if we could just get a sense from Mo, um, whether the panel staff door could wait a year? I mean, I know it's a small amount, but every little bit helps here.
Or, or any of the other doors. I mean, if they're, if they're causing inefficiency because of function or leaking or whatever.
I'll check them from all. 6,500 bucks for a building. I'm just bidding on that myself.
I know, they are expensive doors. Um, do we want to go line by line with all these doors or should we just leave it to Nate?
I think it would be good to have Mo respond to you on all of this. I'm sure he could give you an explanation in detail.
Yeah, I mean, you talked about the overhead doors at Pitts Woods using different, so.
Right, I remember that. The stack replacement that.
It's not the stack to the boiler?
Right, there was something in Public Works to do with the, it had something to do with the, I think the waste oil or something from the maintenance vehicles being in the wrong place. It was a leaking, I couldn't recall.
So either of you know anything about that?
No.
Now I got to, but it was part of the interesting machine system.
Right. Okay, and then, um, the, the next one's a door again, so we'll get back to that. Uh, library building repairs. I know we put off, um, a large expansion in the library in the basement and this was something different. Josh, I'm sorry to make you come out here again. Would you mind just elaborating on what we were doing again with the library?
These are some of the things that were found in the building survey that we have. Code and safety issues with the building itself.
With the, okay.
Different from the.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna take the long one to kind of mimic what Dan said. These were identified by Mo's as outstanding building issues and it was all, I can't, top of my head, I cannot remember what he went over, but it was very much, oh, I had never seen that, but yes, that makes perfect sense. So.
Right, I recall that too, but I don't remember.
I can't, yeah, again, it was a quick meeting about six months ago, but it was everything, there was nothing he identified that was at all in any way an optional or a low line or just a kind of superfluous or aesthetic.
Safety things, okay. Let's keep those in then.
I, I would ask, I guess, that, yeah, any of the, obviously any of the life safety stuff, any of the code violation stuff, all of those things. Should definitely save the budget. If there's anything above them being on that.
Thanks, Josh.
Identify that, that would be.
We were discussing the library.
The library building repairs.
Library, but the study was done for all of the town's buildings and there's a long list of repairs of that sort or issues that we need to be on every time.
So if I could just jump back again, I didn't really, I don't remember if I weighed in on technology stuff, but, um, but the, uh, the trio software is something that I flagged, you know, my initial go-through as a possible cut and so on. I'm interested in that. I mean, I'm, I'm open to deferring the, um, security, uh, IT security audit too, but that makes me, that makes me a little nervous. But, you know, I get trained about IT security incessantly, so I don't know how much of it is just intentionally conditioning by the industry and how much.
Right, yeah, well, Dan had an idea around that of potentially doing half this year and half next, you know, but, um,
it sounds.
We were gonna have some more information on that for making a decision. And then the time clock, we were gonna get information about how much time John is spending processing, so.
I'm, I'm moving forward.
Okay.
And, and and cradle point, no.
Okay, we will circle back to those. We're gonna kind of raise a lot of things that have to come back, I think. So next up was the panel HVAC repairs.
So the, the panel HVAC system failed, uh, in the development office and this needs to be done.
Okay.
This needs to be budgeted because the work is going to get done.
Just, yeah.
It's going to happen.
Right, okay. Um, public services LED sign. Now, I believe originally we were going to re-skin signs and then Mo had a brilliant idea of purchasing much less expensive equipment and he was going to do it himself. And I believe this $16,000 is the cost of um, purchasing the, the equipment.
The technology part of it, yeah.
Of the technology.
He's already acquired the sign.
Oh, okay, was that part of this? That was this year's budget. Okay, so this is the software. Okay, go ahead.
On the, I'd like to cut this out completely and move the sign from here to the public. Technically, I think more people could see it over the lawn. And the electronic sign out front violates the ten forty, so we could save the money. Solve that problem.
I'm not sure I'm in favor of removing the sign completely in front of this building. So many people come here for recreational services and programming and to do business at the clerk's office. And a lot of people don't live down towards twenty, down off 26 where they'd see the other side.
Most people got a transfer station.
Yeah, but I, I don't know. I, I'm.
I mean, there may not be support for it, that's most.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we've already seen a significant cost savings here with, with Mo willing to do the work of replacing the signs and we've already purchased the equipment to, to do. It sounds like we purchased the equipment and this is the software to support the equipment, so.
That would be the other side, too.
It would.
So it's not like it would go to waste.
I believe this, we did just re-skin the, the sign out front in panel, didn't we, this year?
Along with the.
And the LAT sign, yeah. I don't know.
About that, I mean, just. we're, we're talking about, yeah, I, I I'm open to what Dan said, the way he explained it, if it's a matter of not acquiring something, not acquiring a new sign and sign the public works or moving the town hall sign to the current. I, I get that if, if there's a potential system, but I don't get the idea of, you know, of the reskining signs and how this $16,000 is related to that. If, if it's a matter of, if we get away with this, we'd incur more costs. Then I, I get that, but I don't understand the connection.
Yeah, so I, I, I think the name of it is a little misleading in that it's just public services LED sign, but, um, what, what the original cost, if you'll see, there are some items crossed out next to it. We were originally paying a company to come and maintain our, our signs because, you know, the signs wear away and you have to reskin them so that the lettering is not faded and such. In this year's budget, um, Mo purchased some equipment so that he could actually produce skins that would, that would, um, go on the signs to update them. Uh, and then this, this cost in this proposed budget is $16,000 to have for the software and the technology that goes along the equipment to reskin. If we do, if we don't, um, do it ourselves, it's a, it's a larger cost on a year-to-year basis to pay outside firm to buy the skins from an outside firm to install them because Mo will also do pretty many installations, so.
So is, is there a new LED sign that would require?
No, it's, it's just the LED signs we already have. So there's one, there's one over, um, at the transfer station. There's this one here in front of town hall and then we have another sign, getting off the turnpike that's not an LED but does require reskining. And then we have smaller signs entering the village and at the town lines that say welcome to bring. I believe it would, it would solve for those smaller signs.
The 16,000 in the budget is to replace the LED component of the sign at public services, which is failing. It's difficult to program um, some of the pixels.
Okay, so I forgot about that, Ellen.
That's the major scavenger.
I, I don't know the exact, right, right. I don't know the exact cost breakdown of the 16,000, whether that's all for the sign or whether there's other associated costs. So that would be a good question for Mo. And also the question of what would the cost be if you did move the sign outside, but there will be some cost for retrofit.
You're the same size, but I mean, there will be a cost.
Yeah, because I think the LED signage at the transfer station is the old model and this, this is a new model.
But the sign fits the space.
Yeah.
They're the same size.
So I get, yeah, in my mind, if it's a matter of, we've, we've, we're requiring the capability to create our own signs and not have to pay the vendor for them. In order to have cost, cost savings. I, I see, I see that as a different issue as from acquiring sign or repair.
Yeah, so I, I was mixing the two together. So the la- this cost last year was for the, the equipment to reskin the signs. So that wasn't
When you say reskin, we're just talking about non-automated skins that go on regular signs, whether they're
The printed part of the, the sign. Um, this, I'm, I'm sorry, I was confusing the two. This is for the repair of the LED portion of the sign over by the transfer station, I believe. Isn't this the one we're talking about? The one by the transfers? Because the LED equipment on that one is failing. It's worn out, yeah. So Dan's proposing we just get rid of this sign out front and move it over to the public services.
And if there's a, if there's a, if they've signed greats and organs.
And I will confess that's always been a bone of contention.
I mean, to be fair, some, some other electronic signs have gone up in the village in recent, which also don't seemingly align. Yeah, there's lots of signs that don't align.
The, the one at the, at the this one, it's in, it's in the business district.
Technically, it's right over the line, but then the shop and safe has got, I think, I'm just saying, you know, I don't think we're the only one. Yeah, they have an
Again, that's, yeah, different district.
That's not the village? Okay, well, perhaps not, but, um, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't find our sign, um, distracting. It's orange and against a black background.
It's strictly the principle. I mean, I don't understand every other, you know, we're all bound to follow the ordinances we create. I just think the township too.
Well, I also just think it's a source of information right outside of town hall and eliminating the flexibility for
And we should change the ordinance.
Yeah, perhaps, but I, I don't think removing the sign entirely is the solution here. Okay. Uh, oh, okay, um. I guess John has stepped in to talk about the payroll. Uh, John, you want to come up? We had, we did have some questions about the about how much time you're spending on the, on processing payroll versus purchasing this software that would help you be more efficient.
Sure. The payroll takes approximately 20 to 30 hours in a week. Uh, in a bi-weekly period, I would say, right now. So I've been coming in early, staying late to make sure that that gets done in a timely way. And I'd say that, uh, you know, we have to account for the fact that this is a relatively payroll process for me. I was trained to do it, uh, by the previous finance director. As I've gone, I've identified certain needs for the town to make sure that we're fully compliant with the personnel policy. But I wouldn't say that that's the reason why it takes me so long. I'd say that the reason why it takes so long is because of the built-in inefficiency of the absence request process. And that's felt by every single employee who submits an absence request. It has to be written on a paper form. That paper form then goes to their department head. That department head then provides that as part of the apparel cycle to me. I, if I receive it directly, then I put that absence request on a on a calendar, the personnel calendar on, on Outlook. It does not reflect information in a in a timely way because sometimes absence requests go to the go to the department head, um, after someone has been ill, for instance, so that, that doesn't always get on the personnel calendar. So if someone is absent, I usually need to contact, uh, the department head to ask about that. And once payroll is complete on the department head level, it comes to me. And at that point, I then make sure that I don't have any questions about the hours as they've been recorded or the time that's been taken for a specific absence. So that paper form comes to me, either it comes to me digitally scanned, then I print it out and that's included in the, the payroll warrant. And then I enter that information manually into the computer. So I, I would expect that if employees had the opportunity to just submit that absence request digitally, then they'd appreciate being able to see their time updated constantly.
Okay, so in, individual employees would go in and be able to, uh, request time off on their own?
Exactly, and it could be approved by the, by the department head. And it would be instantly added to that, um, that module that would be viewable by the employee and by the supervisor.
Okay.
And then at the, uh, human resources level, I would be able to see that as an administrator and be able to see who's gone, they're gone. Anticipate issues that might come up with staffing in, in a constant way where I don't have to administrate it. It's just all done at the employee level.
So you would just be able to go in and access the data rather than having to manage and input it manually, as whatever.
To maintain an Outlook calendar that, that tries to approximate that.
Right. Okay, yeah, it does sound like the process you're using is very, uh, I'll call it old fashioned, uh, and time consuming.
It's, it's, it's solving a problem, which is, you know, making sure that we're tracking time, uh, correctly. But it, it just, it's very labor intensive. So that was, I was maintaining the personnel calendar prior to the departure of the, uh, the previous finance director. And there was additional forms going back and forth between her and myself, trying to make sure that all of that was updated. So it's a little bit more efficient since I'm doing both payroll and the, uh, the time off, but it's, uh, it's still an inefficient process and it's felt by everyone.
Okay. That's helpful. Go ahead, Matthew.
So we heard the figure of bi-weekly, the payroll is 20 to 30 hours of your time, is that what I understood?
Bi-weekly.
Every two weeks you have to put
I have to set aside that time.
And with this system, what would that reduce to? Do you have any idea?
I would say I could do it in six hours.
Yeah, that's dramatically different. I mean, just for, if you're coming in early to deal with this, that's, you know, not something that's long-term good for your mental health.
The payroll process, it's, it's, uh, it's a big process because it doesn't just involve making sure that uh, the time is, is correctly reported, but also it involves making sure that taxes are paid on the back end. You're administering benefits as well and there are questions that naturally come up. We have employees that cycle in, recycle out, and so we have to constantly keep that information up to date.
Okay, so this system would retain all of that for you?
Correct. It, it would all be a, an add-on for our current, um, accounting software.
So was you, so you have the trio software that's accounting, but there's no payroll. This module would basically be a payroll module and that would get into that existing system.
We do have a payroll module currently, but we don't have an absence request add-on for that. And so when folks need to take time, that all needs to be reported manually. And then at the end of the payroll cycle, then put in, you know, all of that data entry is what's taking me so much time. So it would be far simpler to review and, um, it'd be simpler for employees, simpler for, for, uh, the department heads because they'd be able to access that information and be able to verify, yes, this is correct and then, um, report the earned time to me.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I'd be in favor of maintaining this expense. It sounds like it would ultimately be a significant cost savings, but also a significant, um, improvement to the work-life balance for John, his workload, so.
Well, I, I think that, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
I, I was going to say that, um, there is, there is a cost associated with it upfront. There is both the cost of the new equipment and my understanding also is that we're still we're still paying for this equipment. So we're still on a contract for the equipment that we have. This is through a, a program called Finger Check where folks come in and they sign in if they're hourly employees using their fingers. So that contract still needs to expire, that I believe it expires next, next year.
Okay.
But I'd argue that the expense is well worth it because, um, you know, what is staff time worth?
Right, it's a significant cost. Go ahead, Dan.
What's the expense of the current system?
If, it would be the same.
So
if not less expensive, uh, month to month.
I mean, as far as seeing to the end of the contract, how much money is left?
I don't have those figures in front, right? But I can get them.
So is the question basically, we would be, by getting this new system, we would be losing the, the expense we've already spent on the old system, is that?
Not for one year.
Well, we'd buy out that contract in order to in order to start this new contract through Harris Local Government, who supplies our, our payroll software.
And that, that expense for buying up the contract is not being that 30,000?
It's, it's already in the operating.
Go ahead, Nate.
I have an invoice here from Finger Check and just for the subscription fee, hosting, per fee, a per employee fee in the administrative software, it was $5,160 a year. And I don't know if there are other fees associated with it, like lease payment for equipment over a six-year time period. I think that's what we're paying now. Is the, what the cost. I don't know how much that is.
And so is that not like an ongoing cost?
That's a monthly service fee.
Monthly?
We pay a monthly service fee of $430. The total is $5,160.
And we would not, we would have to buy that out in order to build this new system?
Right.
And, and the ongoing cost, monthly cost of this new system would be about the same?
Yes. It, it's a little bit lower.
Oh, go ahead, Nate.
Counsel, just in case anyone is wondering or in case anyone who might watch this videos, uh, the video of this, please, please wonder. I made two different attempts last year to outsource our payroll process to two companies in Maine and they both declined when they got into our system and understood the complexity of it. So it's a, it's a big job.
Well, again, I, I would be in favor of keeping this if, if folks would like to revisit. We certainly can.
Can we drop holes to, if you want to get a sense of if this is not, this is already done?
Okay.
That's an option.
Yeah, we can do that. Just do a quick you know, be in favor of keeping it or would like to revisit it for changes to the budget. Matthew, how would you?
On, on the time clock?
On the time clock, yeah.
I mean
Software.
Data entry is so crushing.
Yeah, I know.
And to the extent that we can eliminate the necessary you know, for the, for the benefit of ours. I have a hard time.
Yeah, that's
Of being, yeah, I, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm much more in favor after hearing
Yeah, okay. Marty, how about you?
Go with the loose.
Dan?
I need more information. I, I'm curious, for instance, if the change that you're suggesting would perhaps allow us to outsource payroll in the end? Or is there a change that we could make that might make outsourcing payroll easier to do that's different from what you're proposing? So I, I don't support buying this at this time.
I mean, Nate, did, did you get, did you get any sense from these companies you were, reached out to what, what changes we might make to?
I mean, it was streamlining the system to eliminate all the variables that John's talking about. If we get it to a point where it takes John six hours a week, I would see a point in how all of the works are
Right. I, I'm in favor of keeping this. It seems like a, a cost that's worthwhile. Okay. Um, thank you, John. Where were we? Panel HVAC, you said that needs to happen. Uh, oh, the LED sign. I guess we didn't really decide on that. Yeah, I mean, I, it well, why don't we start with you, Dan? Are, are you in favor of maintaining this current LED sign at this expense?
No.
No.
Uh, I believe one was open.
Matthew, what are your thoughts about repairing the, um, public services LED sign versus just removing the one from town hall here, moving it over?
I guess I would be more in favor of eliminating the one. Because I see, I see the one down, you know, from my own experience, I see the one at town hall. Because I see, I see the one down, you know, from my own experience, I see the one at town hall. You know, if you keep flipping for another year, I would favor that, or if if it's, it's just not worthwhile, I would say rather than. Incurring the expense of moving this one down there, we just do one of us for a while.
I, I really think we need, I, if we're gonna have one sign, we need to maintain the two signs we have. I I would be in favor of repairing this and maintaining it. I really think it's a. It's a way to keep people informed, especially if they don't make their way down twenty-six. Um, I I know, for instance. Um, someone who was trying to vote, not, not this year, but in November of last year. Uh, was lamenting that there wasn't information on this sign, letting him know that voting was open, so. Yeah. Um, so I think if we can utilize it in that way to inform the public of things going on, it's it's a worthwhile thing to to keep.
Yeah, I I agree to keeping the town hall signs, it's worthwhile, I understand. I'm questioning whether or not we take the public works, because that's, that's the one that's got the problems, right?
Right, so the the public services one, the LED signage is is failing, so this would be to repair that. Um, Dan was proposing, instead of repairing that, we just remove. This town hall sign and move it over to public services, so that the only, the only sign would be the one at public services.
Right, and I get, and and my counterpoint is this, is that the only sign would be the one here at town hall. And not move on here, there, but just do with one month. That seems like the most cost effective.
I think, yeah, I just, I really think we need both of them, but I, but I think we're kind of two to two on this, so maybe we need answers. Yeah, let's just get into it.
Sure.
Um.
Well, I I just, just as an informational uh note, um, when town. When the town's closed, we use that sign to inform people who might have a trailer full of. Construction waste, so they don't make the turn and get to the end of the driveway and then find out that the gate's locked. There there is that, that is one distinct benefit.
Well, we'll move on for now.
There may be other ways of doing that.
Yeah. Uh, next up was equipment, um, the skid lift, Nate, we were gonna ask about the rental costs for that, um. The trailer, I don't.
So we have lots and lots of equipment that needs to be moved from one place to another. Similarly to the trucks, the request for the trucks, this is just to maintain just basic operational steps.
Right, and I think to Dan's point earlier, Mo has a lot more going on than he used to, any kind of equipment that makes his. Uh, jobs more efficient makes sense to me. Anyone have any opinions on the trailer?
Yeah, I gotta have it.
Yeah, okay.
I think that, I mean, the lift is, you know, again, the question is, is that something that we can? Yeah, I understand that, I I think it's. I don't know how much true work you could do with that, but um. And I understand a bit about the signs.
Yeah, I'm agreeing. Okay, well, Nate will get back to us on some cost options there. Um.
I mean. Bonding, you know, or leasing. At least owning something.
Right, that's.
Sounds more attractive.
Right. So do keep in mind, if we lease to own every piece of equipment we have listed here, it's actually gonna cost us more in the long run, so. We have to keep that up for sure. Um, next up is Libby Hill Vault Winter Path Machine. I think this again speaks to increased responsibilities. For buildings and grounds, they're now maintaining the Libby Hill Trails year round, um, and this machine will help them do that more efficiently. Six thousand dollars.
We have one of these, I think.
There's one, this is a different condition.
I think this one was like easier or better to use, I can't, I don't.
I guess, you know, again, since we have to find cuts, if we have one. It may not be the ideal situation, but it's the way we move the trails here, by the way, man. This is gonna really hurt you.
Piece of equipment. One one consideration here is I believe. It might be that this is to replace a piece of equipment that is privately owned.
That sounds right to me, no, I'm saying, yeah.
One of the principles for, um, great community endowment, we would like for the town to just take all of it over. Rather than having to incur that operating expense. But I'll, I'll find out for sure.
We have a lot of questions from Mo, so we'll just have to hear back from him.
It doesn't seem like a terribly big item, but, um, yeah, I guess the the facts matter in that case.
Right.
I was willing to to skip over that, but uh, given the stance, thoughts, and then.
My, my, my three pages that have to. Remember I gave you earlier, I mean, a lot of work to.
Right, it does, it does add up, yeah.
And that's, I'm grateful for that work.
The reserve account, I believe that was contingency funding for buildings and grounds, isn't that correct? Yeah, and we already reduced that from fifteen thousand to ten thousand in the prior conversation. Yeah, Dan.
And is this an accumulative, or, yeah.
This is a, this is a, a lot of sinking thought, but it doesn't mean.
What would be helpful for me is to, if we could add another column to this, that basically shows the total that's in. Because I think this is, the land acquisition one and skateboard is one. It would just help to. Yeah, I'm sorry, lost my way a little bit, we're talking about the reserve account, you know?
Yes.
There is money in there all that, with the putting money in.
It's basically. It's basically a contingency fund for buildings and grounds in case something unexpected happens, or something costs much more than they anticipated. An account where they can draw from without having to go back to the voters for.
Right, and this, this ten thousand dollars is just in addition to existing.
Yes.
Account.
Yes.
Does that have to be um, its own account, Nate, does designated as a reserve account, or can that appear? For the buildings and maintenance.
Well, it's, yeah, it's being funded from CIP, but it is a designated fund, it's sort of separate from this and the general fund.
But it is, the purpose, the goal of the council was to designate it as a reserve fund strictly for building.
Yes, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I, I actually will propose to you later in this year that we change the. Just the department from buildings and grounds to facilities, it's really for maintenance of facilities at the discretion of the. Buildings and grounds director with some oversight from me, something large, but, yeah, that's the general idea.
Yeah.
But our, our, you know, again, our, our definition of the town's facilities now includes um another park. And the uh Libby Hill maintenance that we need.
That would, yeah, that would, well, that would be interesting discussion, I mean, perhaps just in the title, just pretty. So I think it's very important to have those kind of reserve accounts, I think that's a sort of an, an asset management principle I favor. But in, to your point about one, two thousand dollar cuts, if there are a number of those accounts that we could just put a little less in this year.
Yeah.
Maybe I'd be open to that.
Right.
We've been crawling towards increasing the amount in that, creating slowly. Yeah, it's it's just a thought.
Right, well, let's find out, let's find out how much is in there currently before we decide if we want to lower this amount. Um, I'm going to skip over debt service, since that's not really negotiable. Um, except for the proposed bond, which is a separate topic. Um, then we've already talked about land acquisition, that's sort of. To be determined. That we need to know how much is in the account currently, and and then Dan raised a point whether or not we have permission to vote. Whether we have permission or whether the voters need to vote on expending this fund, so we'll, we'll talk about that later.
It's been spending the money instead of already.
Yes, right, um, and then I raised the skateboard park earlier, thank you Anthony for coming up, um, giving us an update, um. I, I feel, I feel bad recommending that this could go for this year, but I, I. Given the situation where we're not actively planning right now, um, and we have some funds in there already, I think we could make this cut for at least this year. For the skateboard park.
When I went, you know, when I went through, I highlighted it.
Yeah.
Um, it all, you know, I mean, but with mixed feelings.
Yeah, same.
We were talking about the need, you know, to have an attractive place for for youth and.
Well, it also appeals to a group of. Yeah, it appeals to a group of youth that aren't really, you know, it's kind of like those early teen years where they can't get around. By themselves yet, but they don't wanna be hanging out with little kids in the rec program, you know, so I think it's a good, it's a great place. For that group of children and it's a need we have, but, and then I'm not saying we don't put more money in later at different years, but. We really haven't even begun planning and there's already some funds in there, so.
I agree completely. It it needs to be done, right? Twenty years ago, and that was twenty plus years ago, when I was on school board, we built that. Skateboard park over in the small park in the high school and middle school. Um, in the end, it, we tried to do it cheap, and everyone notices it's not there.
Yeah.
And most of the, most, so yeah, I I think that, um, the next time we take a bite of that apple, we can make sure we do it the right. And find the, the, the best spot for it, because it's not.
All right, well, that's sad, but unnecessary, um, something you can address now, um. Library, meeting room, chairs and tables, public commute, computing lab table, um, go ahead, Nate.
Josh has volunteered that uh cutting the, this budget to eight thousand dollars. For ten meeting room tables and deferring the rest of it for FY twenty-five would be tolerable.
So cutting the whole budget to eight?
Cut it from eighteen to eight.
To eight for tables and chairs?
Ten, ten tables and chairs for the meetings.
And then deferring the computing lab table and.
I, which is a very popular resource in the library, but if you have to cut something, Josh. Suggested that you'd rather see it here deferred until next year, and I'm putting lots of words in his mouth. He hasn't come right yet.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you, Josh, for making that recommendation, so that's ten thousand, we can. We put off till next year. Um, professional services, I think we've actually moved a lot of what we had in this category to our TIF funds. Um, and what's remaining here is supporting the revaluation that we need to do, um. And we're saving towards that revaluation, which will cost a significant amount of money in the next, I believe, what, three years from now, we we'll be doing that. The comp plan in.
Actually, moving that timetable up.
Because of the.
Changes in evaluations being subprecipitous in the real estate market.
Okay, so do we?
Next year, actually.
Oh.
Is that right?
So do we?
Starting in twenty twenty-four, no, twenty twenty-five. So. When, when is the revaluation starting? Is it next spring?
No, it's gonna be, um, Warren Asselin on the assessor. The uh revaluation is going to be implemented in two thousand twenty-four.
Okay.
So the.
Is that the full revaluation or is that just the mini one?
Equalization.
Equalization one, okay.
So we still do need to plan for the full reval, but we can push that out. Um, but that money that's being collected is for that future.
The full revaluation, right, okay, that's what I was understanding, okay, thank you, Martin.
And she said we could push the, the full reval out.
Right.
Put a little less money in.
Right.
I don't think.
Well, no, no, we're not putting less money in, she's just, um, so we're using some of the money we've already saved to do an equalization project. Sooner than we were anticipating, so we need to continue saving at this higher rate, so that we will then have enough funds for the full revaluation. Because we have to use some of what we've already saved for this equalization project that we're doing in FY twenty-four, right?
I I thought I heard you say that the full reval could be pushed out.
We are pushing it out, but what you see there is pushing it out. We have some money already in that account, and due to the market conditions. Uh, we're doing an equalization project that's going to be implemented FY twenty-five. And, um, so we will need to keep saving money for the full reval. Which was unexpected until, you know, for most recent three years. So the fifty thousand dollars that we're uh putting in, um, with the hopes that we'll have. Three hundred thousand dollars, which may have to be increased at a later date, depending on what costs are for our full revals. But we plan to do that in early two thousand thirty, thirty-one, somewhere around there. The last full reval we did was implemented in two thousand eighteen. We usually like to go. No more than ten years, sometimes you can push it out, which we're doing, to twelve or thirteen. So, but that's, that's a good timeline.
But one of the reasons we're able to push it out is because we're doing this equalization project sooner, yeah. Dan, did you?
There was, I I've spoken to several people, there was um some confusion about this. Voters, I think some of it's the language. Can you um just kind of for the record? Do a quick definition of the difference between the equalization process and.
Sure.
Sure, so an equalization project is when um all of the market. Sales are reviewed and they. Our cost schedules are adjusted to accurately reflect what the current market conditions are. It does not involve any site visits, there, nobody goes out to your home and measures and lists what you have there. It is ninety-nine percent internal.
Um.
Paper, it's a paper.
It's a paper process, correct. Whereas a full reevaluation is when. You have a, every, every single property is visited onsite with the property card. Um, all the buildings are measured to make sure we have the correct um property information on our records. And then that gets, it's also paper, but it involves a lot more work and a lot more time. The equalization project, which is a actually much cheaper, because it doesn't involve that work. Gets us um at market value, which is a requirement of the state to. Award the full value of exemptions to residents. So it gets us where we need to be, and also it creates, we call it an equalization project, because. Over time, there um inequities develop between different areas of town. So a certain neighborhood that'll be more desirable, so the market there will be. The prices there will be more than, say, you know, just somewhere else, so we have to actually. Um, adjust those so that we're equitable, so that we're not charging, you know, you know, property owner A. The same as property owner B without looking at the market for those two different areas, so.
Okay, Dan.
And just to correct me if I'm wrong, but want to emphasize the fact that. We're, we're working within the benchmarks that the state has set as far as needing to provide the. Homestead exemption and trans exemption and those kinds of things.
Correct.
Two people at a hundred percent, if we don't do, if we don't keep our evaluations. Whether it's sort of the equalization process or the rebound, at that hundred percent level, then we have to reduce. Or we don't have to, with a common or senior reduction.
Correct, that's in state statute.
Right.
We are required to reduce those exemptions by our certified ratio, so if we're only certifying. At ninety-five percent, which is what we're going to be doing this current year, I can only award ninety-five percent of those exemptions.
Again, it's complicated.
It is very complicated, I I have, I, I hope. It is very complicated. I I have, I I hope I've explained it so that people can understand the difference, but as I always say, please call me with any questions. I'm always available. I'd be happy to explain it.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, welcome.
Did you have any questions, Matthew?
No, no.
Marty.
Thank you.
So the comp plan implementation, I believe that's with the contract we have with the principal group to continue the work with implementing.
This isn't actually for Goral Palmer and largely for comp plan implementation in the zoning. We do have quite a bit of money in the CIP, sorry, in the TIF fund for the principal group and other incidental planning and engineering needs that we don't we anticipate we're going to need those funds, but can't tell you. Because we're not far enough into that part of the process with the DOT.
Okay, so this this is funding to to work with Goral Palmer on redoing our zoning. Is that?
Yes, I'm I'm going off of a memo I got from Doug in February. The reason for keeping the funding is that there are funds to use GP, Goral Palmer and consultants as we move forward on comp plan implementation, including the zoning. And Doug is here and can.
Would you mind just elaborating on what you mean by that a little bit?
Doug Webster, ring director. Is this the CIP?
Yeah, it's the CIP line that says comp plan implementation for professional services.
Thirty.
Thirty, yeah.
Very, yep. As the manager alluded to, there are a lot of different elements here. I remember that this budget was put together before the council became aware of the, or was fully aware, I guess I should say, of the cost increase with the Armith Road. There are a lot of different elements for the village. It's like you've got the village and you've got the the non-village zoning piece with the village. Remember, there are still, at least from my to my knowledge, outstanding questions with regards to stormwater and other infrastructure studies that may be necessary. The townwide zoning, actually in the process right now of trying to get the GIS mapping piece going, which is one of the key pieces. So there's mapping, there's feasibility. A lot of this is sort of chicken and egg. You can't, at least I don't think, obviously, the council do do what you what you need to, but I don't think you can make a well-informed decision about what can or can't happen in the village until we have a handle on the viability of the infrastructure.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we move the stormwater and wastewater feasibility work though to TIF funds?
Some of that is.
It's on this page, it's on page two.
Yeah. So I'm just wondering what's the differentiation here between what we're spending out of the TIF for that work and what we're calling comp plan implementation under professional services?
That's the the zoning, the zoning piece.
Zoning, okay.
The mapping, looking at development constraints and making sure as we can that the, as an example, the new commercial districts are viable for that purpose.
Okay. That's awesome. Thanks. Anyone have questions?
I think it would be good for us, since we haven't had a service, there are a lot of moving parts to all of these projects. And I think it would behoove us to have some more shut time just to, because we have new members also, to get a check in sort of what those budgets are and where we are with those projects and what we think the timeline is for completing the different portions of it. For instance, you know, because I don't know if it's rise or raise, which are pretty complex both ways, the federal grant to do both the work on the Armith Road and the Main Street. You know, there are some significant deadlines we need to have planning. Spring is, I understand, to apply for that. But in any case, I think just think it would be good for us to check in.
And yeah. As far as the this thirty thousand dollars for rezoning. To consider what it would mean if delayed.
Well, yeah.
Or delay, you know, this aspect.
I think what what it would mean would be we're gonna, we're how many years out now from the comp plan approval process? It was approved in twenty twenty, November twenty twenty. So we'll be three years out this fall from the approval of the comp plan, and we have yet to make significant progress on updating our zoning and ordinances to reflect those changes in the comp plan. I would be hesitant, to say the least, with removing anything that's supporting that work or something. They're, yeah, ten to twenty, ten to fifteen, twenty, depending, yes.
I I don't disagree with you at all. I mean, there have been other things we've we've hoped to be to do. They've been waiting longer than we've agreed, but
Sure.
I I don't disagree with with that sentiment at all. But I think we need to coordinate all efforts, all of our different efforts to make sure that we're getting those back as much as we can. Focus on the most important things first. That's that's really.
Well, I mean, I don't disagree with you, but if this work in particular is supporting GIS mapping that will help us actually complete a zoning map that aligns with our land use map in the comp plan, I think that's pretty instrumental for completing all the rest of the things we need to do.
I agree completely, but when you you get down to the next page and you look at the amount of money that we've set aside from TIFs, from the TIFs for next year. And then when you look at the ARCA money that we've spent, we've spent a lot. We dedicated a lot of funds, created the ARCA money, with all of the money. I just think we have a responsibility to coordinate for the rest of our building. And we haven't had a high-level conversation at all.
Yeah, I don't disagree that a workshop kind of regrouping around all of our projects is a bad idea, but if we're talking about cutting funds right now, I I really am would not be in favor of cutting any kind of planning work that would help us progress on implementing.
This isn't our line of business.
Okay. Marty, what are your thoughts on the comp plan implementation line item in this year for thirty thousand? I should say. Matthew, right?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's three out of four of us who actually know the budget in favor of letting me there, I'm totally for.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I mean, like I said, at this time.
Yeah.
But if I favor. Twenty one thousand dollars instead of thirty hundred.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Okay, so do I don't think we need to go over TIFs. I feel like we really, yeah, it's not going to impact much at all. Do you? You feel differently, Dan?
Yes, I don't think that we have to go over it right now.
Okay.
But it is. But it does have an impact on, okay, you're spending this money instead of looking at other sources for the funds online. You know, we've got four hundred thousand dollars in the in the village tax. And we're spending over sixty eight thousand dollars of it.
It is, I.
So this is kind of off budget, and I think that's one of the things that kind of concerns me a little bit about this, but you're right, it's not.
Well, at least a hundred sixty thousand dollars of it is it will support the Douglas Field relocation and expansion, and that's all very dependent on if we get a grant to support that work too. So potentially, potentially that's not going to be spent. I don't.
And there's a lot of support.
It is. I'm not saying we should remove it. I'm just saying it's potentially going to be unspent. Because a lot of these funds are just being set aside for in case we need to use them. They're not necessarily all going to be spent. But perhaps we can come back to TIF.
If money could be spent out of this fund to eliminate, to 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 cover the thirty thousand dollars for comp planning, it takes you. If that seems like it could affect the budget.
Well, the the problem, not the problem, each TIF is designated with with a very specific reason for creating the TIF, so the money couldn't be spent for that.
Right, I think the comp plan covers the whole town, not just the village. Yeah, so that would be difficult to argue that that was relevant.
Every time we create a TIF, we have to be following very exactly what it means to spend.
Okay, so it is after seven, and I think we can wrap up for the day, but
We got through the CIP.
Yeah, we got through the CIP, which is a bit of a bear, and talked a little bit about some other things like electricity and fuel and community services and cola, and we can revisit those at a later meeting. Before we adjourn, I just, I think it's another meeting would be warranted, given we didn't really finalize a lot of our decisions. So, yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask just a couple of quick questions before? Nate, how difficult would it be to run a report by say, just giving all the legal?
Unfortunately, it would all have to be done by hand. Why is that? There's no function in tree that allows us to, we we asked about that very recently. We could, we could ask for a custom budget now, report the bill charges.
Yeah, okay, so I'll have to do this.
We we might be able to, when I say by hand, like it means manipulating it's own spreadsheet. Someone can do it, but it would be a be a lot of stuff.
Can I get the trio report as as the next cell?
Are you, are you looking to compile the total costs for things like legal? And do we, we had a spreadsheet that did that before, Dan. Yeah.
I don't know how, I don't think it's.
Have the numbers changed much?
Well, the numbers haven't changed, so.
Right, that, those are line, those are line items we haven't adjusted. So I think that that spreadsheet that we have is probably accurate. Nate, would you mind resharing that spreadsheet just for Matthew? The one that Dan is talking about.
It's on the report list, but I'll see if I can find it, so.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so we need to give at least a week's notice for the meeting. So the soonest we could do one would be next well, really, that's not, that's not enough time to post agenda because today is a week prior. So I think the first week of August would be the soonest we could do something.
The week of August, about the one.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I gotta get my phone.
I can do that one if you don't mind me being remote.
I'm sorry, Dan, what did you say?
I said I can do that one if you don't mind me being remote.
I think if you need to be, if anyone one of us needs to be remote at any time during this, I think that's fine. I'm just trying to find. No.
We have a site walk, planning as a site walk Thursday, the third, by one.
Yep.
You will?
I will. Second, but that doesn't count.
Okay. I could probably be available any evening that week. So you're out the second. You have a site walk on the third, so would Monday or Monday, the thirty first, or Tuesday work for anybody?
Either one of those, five.
In the evening?
Yeah.
Five?
Yeah, let's do five since that's a little better for staff. That's okay.
Yeah, I mean, for me, dinner later, later is better, but.
Okay.
You know, it's five.
It's five thirty better than five?
Yeah.
We could do five thirty, Monday, or does he have preference on Monday or Tuesday?
Well, yeah, I mean, if if, you know, I I guess I'm thinking, you know, a half hour better for me is a half hour worse for eight people. I I guess I'd rather.
Okay. Okay, well, let's keep five then, but does anyone have a preference on the Monday or Tuesday? Yeah, Mondays are, let's do. Go ahead, Nate.
Could I just give you a couple of pieces of information?
Sure.
One is that the current terms for the bond that you have will expire on August the eleventh. The new bond terms will most most likely have a higher interest rate.
Right, interest rate.
So I don't, I don't expect you're going to be able to put together your budget and publish warrant articles and issues and have a public meeting at time for the the eleventh. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Technically, the bond passed, so.
And then the second thing I wanted to share with you is that the town attorney recommends that you consider the entire budget to have failed because there'll be one failed.
Including the bond question, all the whole, okay.
Yeah, you should consider all of the warrant articles, and I would recommend that you add a warrant article for ARCA to need to be revoated.
Okay.
That's the opinion of.
Well, no, if that's the legal opinion of our attorney, we should certainly follow that.
So I I I would ask whether you might consider scheduling two more meetings while we're all.
Okay, I think that's probably warranted. Well, let's keep, let's do the thirty first, since we all already agreed on the thirty first of five. Okay, and then do we want to, do we want to meet twice that week, or do we want to push it to the next, to the next week? You are? Dan, what?
I'm free. The site walk is at the time.
Five.
Five, so that's.
That's good for an hour.
Could we start, Thursday's a later day anyway for staff. Can we start? Is six not too early for your site?
I am gone, so I'll be remote that week.
Okay, well.
Oh, yeah, we could do six.
Do you think six would be enough time for your site? Okay.
At least.
All right, well, let's do six o'clock on the third, so. And six, yeah, six o'clock. Okay, and then we'll have a council meeting on the fifteenth. Where we are hoping to finalize the warrants. Is that correct, Nate?
Correct. So we need some lead time left. If you feel like you may need to have a third additional meeting, I would, I would suggest that you to have to have your budget dialed in by the deadline will be Tuesday, the eighth, beginning of Tuesday, the eighth, beginning of the last meeting in order to get the material published, fabricated and published in time for the packet.
Why do we have to have it that early? Why do we have to have everything wrapped up?
Once you make your final decisions on it, you know, later than the eighth, I need to circulate it around to the assessor, the finance director, the town attorney, clerk to do it all formatted so that we can get more articles published. And in time per your meeting on the fifteenth, so you can do your final vote to approve the material.
So the packet material needs to go out for the fifteenth on the tenth.
Go out on the tenth.
Right. So in order for the packet to be ready by the tenth, he's saying we need to make final decisions by the eighth so that he can circulate it.
So what about meeting on Monday, it's a study meeting.
Maybe we should do that just as a, and then we can always cancel it if need be. Is that Monday, the seventh, is that five o'clock?
Yeah.
Is that, is that okay? You can consider it sending it for now, but.
Yeah, we can always cancel it.
Can you send me a petition?
I'll send you the placeholder.
Nate's just on top of that already. Okay. It's budget season all over again. Are you, are you busy on the seventh?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Thank you, Nate. I was gonna, I was gonna ask if somebody was gonna do that, and you did it, Marty, I was gonna ask.
To speed things up, if it's okay.
You.
Good night.
You guys can all go, sorry about that, yeah, thank you for sitting through this.
I'm going to. Make the questions I have for potential cuts readable by everyone.
Okay, are we?
Just so you know, uh, so people have a chance ahead of time to think about whether or not.
Okay, well, I'm okay, I'm okay with that, I just want to ca- just. Put the caveat out there that we can't discuss them over email, so, yeah, so.
Yeah.
You can certainly send them around, we can all.
Somebody.
You know, mar- marinated.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, you could go through the list and you may have, you know, you'll have a good reaction to everything. And also, I think I want Nate to have it, because some of these numbers are small, but some of them aren't. Sure, department heads have.
Yeah, I would, um, I think I mentioned this early in the process, and we decided to wait till we had a say, but I would very much like to hear. What, from the department heads.
I, I would love for the department has to be able to respond to your questions about potential cuts and to not have. I, I would hate to keep inviting them to all of these.
Yes.
Invite them to the ones where there's questions.
Well, I think they can do it, I think they have to do it in person too.
Yeah, they could submit their thoughts or even suggestions for things we haven't thought of, um. Outside of these meetings, I'm, I'm fine with that also.
I mean, the, the bottom line is you're gonna make cuts to people.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we put forth an expense budget that we all supported and I supported. Because we have this understanding. So. Now, we just have to.
Right, just.
And, yeah, we, we get, we get guidance from the voters.
Okay, well, I think we've gotten a pretty good start here, and we'll try to get it done in two more meetings, um, maybe three, then we'll. Open there, thank you, everyone, um, we can adjourn the evening at seven fifteen, we don't have to vote, not for workshop. Uh, seven fifteen P M, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.